He was like, you just spray on it. And he came to me the next day, like, oh, is your sign? And he goes, he goes, that's his.
Wells.
He didn't have a square inch anywhere from where he was.
Without.
They they just came up and kept hiding. He just.
Sure. He just kept going.
Oh my gosh.
Okay, having stamina with bug bites, you don't need to have that, right? Yeah, they've been pretty. But I think it's starting to calm down a little bit. Sitting here watching the clock.
Trying to test the screen when it started playing an ad. That is not what I want. There we go.
There we go. We're in opposite, aren't we? Are we ready then? Or do we have to push up here? Just the record button? Yeah, just the red one, I think.
Put on first, right?
Okay.
It's recording.
You can you can start. Okay, we're I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone.
Okay, is there a second?
I have seven.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Next we'll go over our five school board basics. And. I'll start with put students first.
Da 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 in your own policy?
Okay.
Respect the chain of command.
Base decisions on s- shared objective information.
And operate in the public eye. Okay, next we have our approval of our consent items. Are there any questions on there? Um, did everybody get a chance to look over the extra? Bills that Kendra gave us?
They were all pretty normal. One of the um Bosma water for the softener salt, that was the football fundraiser that they did paying for the softener salt.
Oh.
And then Martin Brothers, we'd approved some shelving and things before that. I think this is just part of that, but.
Mm-hmm.
Those were the bigger ones. The other Jump Cloud and maybe are both subs technology subscriptions that are renewing.
Subscriptions of that.
Okay. Seeing there's no questions, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is pass. Um, we have no one here for public forum, so we'll go on to superintendent report.
All right, well, thank you for being here this evening. Um, sometimes I get the question. Do you have much to do in the summer or do you guys have much to do in the summer? And yeah, um, there there's a lot that goes on, obviously, when staff is back and students are back, we enjoy that, but there's a lot of other things behind the scenes. Um, that people may or may not be aware of, but specific to the the goals and so forth. Um, a lot of times spent since the last boarding board meeting, excuse me, in the beginning of July here, just finalizing things with the AEA. Um, and their support for the CTE math next year and still figuring out now with their new reality reduced staff and their services. It it's hard to finalize in a bullet point, but what that's gonna look like, 'cause we have some agreements and things to work with them on moving forward that we didn't do in the past. So let's. We're still working on that as they are too. It's not just civil cheating, just figuring that out. Um, we have the one unfilled teaching position, so spending some time advertising and making some cold calls on that. Um, and and so forth, or we even had some interviews that didn't work out, but we're still working on that for the elementary. Um, arrangements for the dean of students that we approved, Julie Schuler, for next year and excited about that, but just the structure and some plans that we're having in place to get some things started once we get to August here. And then just plans for the PD when everyone returns back in the fall. The principals put a good job of putting the structure together. I just hadn't had the time to look at that and do that, so we're working on that. And then hopefully, that first week of August, we'll fine tune that. Um, some of those I mentioned already, obviously continued discussions of site logic and things as those preparations continue down the line. Um, Kendra more so 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 than myself here, but working on the school safety grant application and submission. And then now that we have that. Um, finding out the details of working through the red tape there, which is fun, but we are looking at with that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we will spend that on. The free school safety radios, the costs, I say free, but there are still costs with that from the governor's free school safety radio program. We'll pay for some of that. We will pay for, um. We're looking at doing new security cameras district wide in each building. It's been a while since that done and has been done and door swipes, like the doors that have the electronic swipes for staff, we'd replace those. Um, some signage on the exterior interior just for emergency personnel, so like, um, if there was a fire drill. Rather than saying there's one at the high school, you can say at the high school in entrance, you know, um, twenty eight or the north second door and there'll be a sign so they know specifically where to enter. Um, we can get some of those signs paid for through the grant and then the remaining funds after we pay for those. We can, the plan is to apply that to the cost of the um facilities improvement project, so just working through that stuff. And yeah, just finishing the reporting work from last year and getting ready for the next year in terms of just kind of the behind the behind the scenes stuff is what we've been spending a lot of our time on.
Thank you. And how about board committees?
Um, in the summer, obviously, we don't meet as often. Finance and facilities didn't meet. That won't probably take place again until after school gets started and some of those will ramp up. On policy, we did meet, um, over a host of policies that were presented and we'll talk about that a little bit more tonight, but I appreciate the work with Laurel. And Jennifer on that and we'll discuss that at the end. And then, um, this year, the five hundred, as I was talking with Laurel earlier, the five hundred series is up for review, so we'll. Start doing those at the beginning of the year to get that out of the way.
Okay. Recognition of excellence.
All right, so for softball, Chris Seiler was Sulan Conference Second Team All Conference and Michael Wilber was honorable mention, so congratulations those two for. Um, their recognition within the conference and the region. And then in baseball, Kane Julius was on the First Team All Conference for baseball and Second Team All District as a utility. And then Riley Getzow was honorable mentioned and congratulations to both of those gentlemen for their accomplishments for the bas- the past baseball season.
Moving on to discussion items. Uh, two minute board policy and finance moment.
So I thought we'd do a little trivia, um. And I'm not gonna pull it up and simply write yet, but if you would go there. Are all policies that we have the same for all schools, true or false?
False.
False. Yeah, I figured you would know that, but um discussing why some of those differences exist. Go to our policies here. Let me get one down. Kendra. I'll give you this. So this is just a sample sheet and then obviously I have some handwriting on it. But you're correct, it is false. Not are all the same, not all policies in all schools are the same, and why would that be? So this listing is from IASB and these are the required or mandatory board policies. So all board, all school boards in Iowa. Have to have those policies listed. If you would go through our policies, you would know that we have more than that. Um, we have a two hundred, as an example, we have a two hundred, a hundred and a three hundred series, right? Um, which aren't listed there. But those are required. For the most part, they're probably pretty uniform between schools. Some of them would be exactly the same. I'm not gonna say every one of them is, 'cause there might be a little bit nuanced difference, but. For the most part, they should be exactly, or very similar, because those are required. And these aren't official categories, but I'm gonna say, so you have your required ones, you have ones that are recommended. Um, there's more than this, but I was just putting down a few examples, so like four oh one point oh five. And if you're like, I don't know what that is, that's fine, 'cause I don't always know. I still have to go back and look myself, but as an example, this one is dealing, it's recommended, is what I'm gonna call, um, dealing with. Employee recor- records. So some policies you'll see have notes on the bottom of them. Um, sometimes they're in box or they're grayed out. It just kind of depends when the primer came out and what the formatting was at the time, but it says, this is not a mandatory policy, so it means it's not required. Right? But it's highly recommended. So it says, but it is a recommended one. It reflects current state and federal laws protecting the confidentiality and retention of employee records. Separate medical fires is a requirement. So there's other employee, or excuse me, there's other policy records like this that would be. What I'm gonna say fall under the recommended category, which is why we have those in place. Sometimes a school may choose to locally not have that. Then you'll have some that are quoted into code or law, so some examples are two hundred point oh one, so which is the board and the organization. How we organize the board is. Required by law. We have some flexibility in that. It doesn't mean the policy has to, but how we organize it has to follow the law, so you'll see here for this policy, it says the law. Establishes the organizational meeting added before the first regular board meeting following the canvassing of votes. Board members are elected, a general election must qualify added before the organizational meeting. So there's things we have to follow. In terms of the law or Iowa code, but um our policy should match that, but it doesn't mean we're required to have that policy, but we still have to follow the law or code. Uh, another example is. Cause the internet is lagging here. Come on. There we go. Five oh one oh two. Says note this and it's dealing with re- non-resident students, so it means students who aren't a resident of your district in the. Breathe a sense, but it says, this policy reflects current Iowa law. Iowa's open enrollment law has not eliminated the need for this policy. This policy affects non-resident students who do not qualify for open enrollment. So once again, it's following law, but not necessarily required policy, but recommended to have in place. And then I'm gonna say you have one final category. Like I said, these aren't official, but most policies, they're either required or mandatory, recommended. You might have some that follow code law and then you might have local. Ones that are unique to a school district. And what actually got me thinking about this is we were reviewing policy in our policy committee the other day and I knew we had this, but I kind of forgot all about it, but. In terms of weapons, obviously, we don't want weapons on school grounds. We're following laws and statutes, but we have a local policy that deals with that as well. This is, this would be ones unique to a school district, so this would be unique to Sibley O'Chita. So if you look at five oh two oh six A. It says, the previous policy restricting weapons on school property is not intended to deny the Osceola County Sportsman's Banquet. From conducting their annual um event on school grounds, which involves the raffle, including weapons. So obviously. Um, Sheldon is not gonna have that policy, 'cause the Osceola County Sportsman Banquins isn't gonna take place there, right? That's unique to our school. Or. It's the second paragraph talks about Veterans Day. If you've ever been to our veterans program, it's a great one, but they do a twenty one gun salute. Technically, that's weapons on school ground, but they're explaining how that is not. You know, disallowing them. So those are just some examples of some. Um, policies that have a local. Um, emphasis there or local policy here, and that would be unique to each school, 'cause maybe not all schools do a veterans program where they do a twenty one gun salute. Maybe that's not done in another school. And that's up to them. So and there's some other examples as well, but just something good to know, as I was doing some trainings this summer, noticed that and so I just wanted to point that out, so. But you all answered that right away, so that was good.
Any questions, or any? Okay, we'll move on to IASB training.
I had talked and I think I sent this out correspondence-wise, but talked about having it um Lan come for a training. So just as a reminder that the dates, we had lined up and said available and what she had available where we landed was on September eleven. Um, right now, tentatively plan at five thirty on that evening, um, unless I hear differently, as we get closer and and we weren't gonna finalize things until we get to August, 'cause that's. By the time I set it up, we were two months out yet and and we're still a month and a half, but once we get there, we had kind of given her some guidelines of things to go over, but we'll finalize that. But right now, she has us booked for September eleven. And then five thirty, we do that here as a work session.
Okay. We'll go on to new business, consider approval of RSAI legislative priorities.
So RSAI is an organization that we became a member of. It's the Rural Rural School Advocates of Iowa. And they provide us and with a lot of resources and advocacy specifically designed for smaller rural schools. Um, and just um some things that are different versus bigger schools. So that's where this is coming from. Each year, those members. Select or rate their top legislative priorities to focus on, and then we need to decide what that is. We can do that two ways. I could fill it out. Or you have a board discussion. I would prefer the board discussion. I am on their legis- I got elected to their legislative panel this year, so we'll use these and then we'll. Um, focus on with their um executive members, what the priorities are, how we're gonna handle that this fall, and then that gives guidance to some of the. Lobbyists and so forth, once the legislative session starts. So I did send that out. Don't know if you had time to look and that's fine. This one is. I'll fill the rest out, but just so that you could kind of see what I'm gonna fill out for them. I put this in PDF form, but this is the survey I have to fill out. Um, I will put out my email and I'll put that, I'm filling this out as a superintendent, but it's on behalf of our district, 'cause we're doing that tonight. These things, we don't have to prioritize them, but these are the ones that they're focusing on that are usually important to smaller rural districts and we just have to give them a priority. Um, in looking in this and in reading, we don't have to rank them, like we we don't have to hit, give one a seven, someone else a six. We could give them all sevens. I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying. We don't have to give them a rank order. We just need to what how important we feel that is and there's. Eight of them, I believe. Nine, ten, I'm sorry, ten of them that they're gonna have that we just need to go through tonight. So. What I'm saying, we'll kind of go through, have a duh, have a discussion and based on what I hear as feedback, give that as a, I'll put that rating down and then the motion can be to. Rate them as presented at the end. So. Um, I'll just kind of start and open up the discussion here and then you guys can kind of give me some input as we talk this. So adequate school resources. Or state supplemental assistance. So this is SSA. So this is in the funding formula, the amount that they increase. Um, per student. So when you hear SSA is at three percent, they're increased funding three percent per student. That's what this is getting at. How important do you think it is for. RSA to advocate advocate for this issue in the upcoming session? For our district. Is that low or high?
I'd say high.
Yeah, I would too.
I would, I would, yes. I'm gonna put that as a seven.
Yeah.
Districts like ours that are small with, you know, flat or declining enrollment, we need that to continue to fund and pay teachers and staff and have resources. Educational staff shortage, quality instruction, I I think kind of a big topic here, 'cause it's. They're talking about staff shortages and providing quality instruction. But how important is for them to advocate on this issue in the upcoming legislative section session?
I'd say a.
I'd say a.
Do you wanna do seven again?
I'd say a.
Yeah. Sitting here without it.
I agree. That's statewide. That's a problem right now. It is. We just had a superintendent's meeting the other day.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
To problem solve at Rock Valley, but they were talking about who's short and everyone's going around the room listening how many teachers they are short as of. That was last week, so as of last week, so I mean, this it, it's not just civil achievement. I think every district listed at least one position. Public school priority, how important is it for RSAI to advocate against investments in the education savings accounts or the ESAs vouchers, et cetera? We know that it's in place, but they're talking about increasing funding in that, which ultimately would take away from public schools. How high of a priority? We don't think that's gonna be a big deal. It could be lower. If we think it is a big deal, higher.
I'd still say it's probably higher.
I. I think it's higher. I don't know that there's gonna be as much disc- and maybe I could be wrong, as much discussion on increasing that, 'cause that's in place right now.
Yeah. Right.
This would probably have been a really high one a couple of years ago when they were doing that, but maybe like a, so we don't have all sevens.
Yeah.
Like a five.
Five, that's what I was thinking.
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, opportunity equity, increasing s- the student, um, equity for increasing awareness for student needs and mental health. How important is RSA to advocate for this?
I think it's relatively high. I'm not saying like a seven, but I think we're probably in that five category for sure, because.
Mm-hmm.
Just like all the other rural areas, just access to mental health services is getting tougher. And I know we have some here in Sibley, which is good, but.
It is. And I think just so that they continue to understand, not that we have direct funding. But that they don't, at some point, see that this isn't important and then you start cutting funding and now we can't even fund our own like guidance school counselor positions.
Right.
Because they don't view that as important. So I think that is, is everyone okay with a five?
Yeah.
There? Okay. Quality preschool, how important it is for RSAI to advocate for this issue in the upcoming legislative session? I would say. Preschool's in place, probably without them wording it here, what they're looking at is what they've been talking about, the big issue with quality preschool is making it all day preschool. Statewide instead of just the half day. Um, I think reading between the lines, that's what they're getting at. There are some places in the state that want all day preschool, 'cause of, well, childcare needs, basically. So I would say that's gonna be, it's not stated here, but that would be a part of it. Strong opinions there?
I'm like in the middle with a.
I I am too.
Four or five. I make a four, yeah, I make a right in the middle like four or five.
Okay. Not that it's not important, but. If we put everything at a seven, it makes nothing real important, 'cause I think we'll have some here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, number eleven on the next page or scrolling down, sharing incentives, and I'll explain this. How important is it for RSAI to advocate for this issue in the upcoming legislative session for your district? Um, this would be. For shared positions to continue to fund those and give you students. So like we have Chrissy that does some HR work, right, for us in Harris Lake Park. We get, we get student funding for that. That is above what she um gets for that position and they do that so that there's efficiencies between districts. Um, they've talked about raising that, but then they have some legislatures that are looking to cut that out. And um I think that's could be something that we'll continue to have to look at and leverage in the future. I'm not saying right now, but I'm just saying, I think that's something we'll look at more and more in the future. So that's what this is meaning. I know if you don't know what that means, that what's in a sharing uh incentive or efficiency, but that's what they're getting at, those shared positions that you get student credit for.
Considering our declining enrollment, I think it's. Important, somewhat of an important.
Six?
Issue, yeah, I would say.
Okay.
Is this a way we can generate funds?
Local school board authority generally. Um, so what this is getting at, it never is a big issue, but they put this on here, so. Iowa's always been about local choice. School boards have the authority to make decisions unless the legislature takes decisions away. And there's been a push in recent years that there's more and more things that have been mandated, which means less and less local control. So this isn't on anything specific, but that's about that to to keep the idea of um local school board decision-making authority. That's what this is getting at. 'Cause the more unfunded mandates you have, which means you have to do this, but we didn't give you any new money. Or things that happened that used to be something that we could decide on locally that we now don't have a choice in. That's what this is getting at. So it doesn't get a lot of press coverage, but this is something that a lot of the agencies are continuing to push for. So that's what they're getting at on this one here. Local school board authority. Thoughts on this one? I was gonna put it at six.
I'm I'm just gonna say it, however, and.
Mm-hmm. Considering who what we have as sevens, yep.
We don't wanna have our say taken away from us.
Especially when we're a smaller school and they're gonna tell us, oh, this isn't, you have to do this, but we don't have the funding.
I know. Right.
Right.
We should have some say, so we have to say like a six-ish.
I uh, a hundred percent agree. Yep.
Too.
Formula Equity, how important is for RSA, RSAI to advocate for this issue in the upcoming legislative session? Um, this is the funding formula and trying to make it equitable between different districts. Um. There's a lot to it, so that's kind of a loaded question on this one. Um, I'll just straight up and say this is probably one of them. It's important, but it's probably in the middle compared to some of our other issues. Bonding capacity, um, at simple majority vote and other restrictions, how important is to advocate for this? So when you want a. Debt bond or a general debt bond, right now it has to be, um, it's not just simple majority, but it's majority. And then you you have the different limits, so you have to first pass the two dollar and five cent. Bond, which we don't have, and then the the four dollar one at your capacity. That's what they're getting at, 'cause of the schools that are dealing with that. You have to pass two issues. And then you might pass it at fifty eight percent, but you didn't get the sixty percent, 'cause they changed that. It's no longer a ma- simple majority, it's a sixty percent or a super majority. That's what they're getting at. How important is that for us locally?
What do you think, Stan?
It's probably not important till you run a bond issue.
Right, right.
To be, the reality is, I mean, people don't think about it or really care about it until you you're the one.
Right.
We've had some local districts who needs it and then you had to run three, three bond measures to pass it. I I'd put it in the middle for right now. I mean, I think it's important, but.
Who needs it, yeah.
I think there's some other ones that we can put more preference on. AEA supports and services, to continue to advocate for AEA to support us, we know that it's gonna look different this year. We know there's things already we're gonna have this year that in the past they provided and they could come whenever, that now we have to pay for. We just, me and Kendra were looking at that the other day. Um, as an example, they don't do just one hour, two hour consultations anymore. So like, if I needed to work on. Math with Kristen and she was in another district and just pop by and check in and work with for us for an hour, they don't do that anymore. Because of costs, so it's either we have to have them for a half day or a full day. Like that's one of the changes, that's gonna be a big change, you know, so like when we do early outs and say, hey, can you come for hours with our elementary? They could, but we might as well utilize them for another part of the afternoon, 'cause they don't just do the hour check in, so. That's kind of what this is getting at, is tho- those changes in the funding requirements. How important is that to us? And I'm gonna say. For a district like us, we can't on our own provide all those support positions and we we. Basically lean on the AEA to provide them, 'cause we can't do that.
Yeah. Right. Seven?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay. And really the rest, I think that's what we need, so I'll just review and see if we're good with this. So for adequate school resources, SSA, the the funding, I put it a seven. Staff shortages, we put it a seven, which is the highest. Um, public school priorities and the funding there, we put as a five. Equal opportunity, um, accessing for mental health and student needs is a five. Quality preschool at a four, meaning the, and I'll explain that to RSAI, we're talking all day preschool as a four. Sharing incentives. And efficiencies as a six, local board authority is a six, the formula equity is a four. Bonding capacity to four and then the AEA support services as a seven. Is everyone good with that?
Mm-hmm.
So then, if we're good.
So, I have to make a motion? To approve what we just.
Yeah, the um priorities for RSAI as presented.
Priorities. I'll make a motion to approve the RSAI legislative priorities as well, Kendra, just a second.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that is passed. We'll go on to the IASB legislative.
So the last one was new. We hadn't done that before. This IASB one, the Iowa School Board, this is from the Iowa Association of School Boards, should look. Or maybe wouldn't look familiar, but sound familiar, 'cause this has been done. I think every year since I've been here. Even, I mean, I wasn't always involved as a principal, but I know what happened. And so they put out the packet and I I sent that out too and there's a PDF to it. This one is a little different. The first half is basically summarizing the priorities and the results from last year, the twenty. This one is a little different. The first half is basically summarizing the priorities and the results from last year, the twenty twenty um three into twenty twenty-four legislative session. So if you switch to pa- or flip to page thirteen, so this is, this is twenty twenty-four, but it'd be obviously when you get to twenty twenty-five. Um, we need to pick the four that we view as our top four priorities. So they do this a little bit differently. So they have the, and I don't remember how many main headings, was it seven? I think sev- eight, yeah, eight main headings, but then they have the subheadings underneath. So really we're picking, and some of them have five subheadings and one s- one of them has one subheading, right? We're picking the four that we view as most important.
Of the main headings?
Of the the subheadings, so on number one, we believe that literacy is the building block. It has student achievement, preschool, early literacy, English language learners, A E A. If we picked all of them, we'd be over our four already, cause that's.
Oh, we can only.
Well, I figured we just had to pick a number.
They want us to get specifically like under number one, student achievement. Now, we could put two a number one, I'm not saying we can't, but student achievement would be one. Um, I'm just picking some random ones, teacher recruitment. Does that make sense? Professional learning development and retention and so forth. So like number three just has one heading. Number eight had one heading, if I remember right. So those are what they're asking us to do.
So they wanted the subheading.
Yep.
Okay.
That is how it's explained to me anyway.
Okay.
So if you take a look at that, maybe what I s- I s- can suggest is if each of you list your four or five that you would want, and I can do a tally.
Sure.
And then we'll go from that, maybe the ones that have the most tallies. And then if there's some ties or something like that, we'll figure it out from there. Do we need a little more time or is everyone ready? More time? Well, keep it moving here, we'll discuss. I, how about, I'll start maybe, I had more than four, but if I was gonna whittle it down to four, I'll say my four, then we'll just kinda go around.
Sure.
So I had teacher recruitment and licensure. Mental health, assuming that was student and staff. And then under point seven, I had the S S A, the supplemental state aid and the school, school funding policy. One of the points being increase the budget guaranteed a hundred and three percent to provide additional stability to support student achievement for districts with declining enrollment. Not saying right or wrong, that's just what I picked, but I whittled it down to those four. Laurel, did you have four?
I had um student achievement.
Student achievement, yep.
Under the first one. I had under the second one, recruitment and licensure.
Okay.
Under the fourth one, mental health, and then under the seventh one, S S A.
Got it. Is anyone else ready?
Uh, number one, I had student achievement.
Okay.
Number two had the S S A. Uh, number three is um is a teacher recruitment and licensure.
Okay.
And four, I've got the A E A.
I just saw that.
That was under number one.
That was under one, said I saw that earlier, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had student achievement, teacher recruitment and licensure, mental health, and school safety.
Is that eight?
Yes.
Yeah. Cause I was looking at that one too, that's why I remembered that one, okay?
Um, I had student achievement.
Okay.
A E A, teacher recruitment and licensure and mental health.
Okay. Okay, so for sure, out of the five of us, we all had teacher recruitment and licensure, so I'll have that as one of them. We had student achievement and mental health, had four each, so I think those would be the next two. The A E A had two votes. Oh, state supplemental aid had three, the S S A, and then we had a couple others at one. So should we do the S S A as the fourth? One, so we would have student achievement, teacher recruitment and licensure, mental health, and the sta- um supplemental state aid, S S A. Sound good?
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
So yeah, we could just as.
Someone make a motion on that?
As I presented, yep.
Is there a sport we presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the Sibley of Chedden I S I A S B legislative priorities as presented by Stan.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 That is approved. Consider approval of twenty-four, twenty-five di- district depositories.
So we have to do this annually and see the listing of the ones where we currently do this. Um, after talking with Kendra, I did bump this up on Friday. In the past, it's been eight million. We put it to ten million just because of right now this year for timing of when the midpoint of the year, when we haven't expended all our funds, but we start getting the funds for the the revenue bonds, this from the facilities project, there could be a time where we have more funds, but haven't paid them all out for the work. So that's why we put the limit higher only for that reason. If it has to go higher than that, then we just do a special motion or something like, I've had a board meeting if we'd come to, but we thought that would cover us for the most part for the first part of the year, if that comes from a timing thing, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? So. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of new contracts.
So we just have a couple here, Dalton Wingate, volunteer high school football coach, and I put pending completion. When uh Amy Elser told me to put this on here, but I think as of Thursday or Friday, I think he completed everything, cause he's working on stuff with her, just as an F Y I. And then Ella Bruxford as a para educator filling one of her openings for next year. Um, and she will be doing, if you remember from the year's packs, we've talked about the T P R A grant. I couldn't tell you what that stands for exactly, but it's basically the grant through the state of Iowa, they help pay for tradition, tuition and their education while they're a para education, para educator to get them on the track to being a teacher, which is what she's interested in doing, so that's why we're approving hers now.
Sounds good. Is there a motion to approve these contracts?
I'll make a motion to approve new contracts.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of superintendent contract addition.
So there's a a lot of jargon in there, but basically um it's repeated twice of what that additional um contract language would be that would be added to my contract as as we've discussed previously.
Mm-hmm.
This has to be approved in an open board meeting and and like I had talked with the board earlier, this is something that we got from in my conversations through other mentor, superintendents and I A S B. Um, is where the language came from.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this? Someone, okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that was passed. Consider approval of payments to site logic.
Yep, there, as attached and as we discussed last month, remember the invoice amount will always be higher, we just pay a percentage of that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the payments to site logic?
So what have they started on or what was it?
So they have, they're doing off, they're working on official architectural slash engineering plans for the entrances, like we we've seen some, you know, and we showed you the official ones, but those were drawings, not actual plans where that you um work through like the wiring and the substructure. And then I don't know if they got this done, they were gonna start doing this summer into this fall. Working with uh E D A out of Sioux Center, do core samples in the playground area and like the um discus area. That's where they would run the piping for the um uh.
Geothermal?
Geothermal?
Geothermal, thank you, geothermal for the H VAC, but they have to do some samples and so forth to determine depth and, you know, compactness determines how far down they have to go and temperatures and all things like that. So that's one of the things they, I they were hopefully by the end of July gonna maybe start on that, I don't know if they've gotten that done yet or not, but that's where they're at with that. Good question.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the payments to site logic.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That is passed. First reading of board policies.
So these were the policies presented from to the policy committee that we went over through a policy primer at I A S B. There's kind of a description there. And you do have, when you make the motion, have to read through them, I have that in the motion in the heading as well. Um, I will say there was a second set that went th- with this that we recommended not approving, that were updates to Title Nine based on legal counsel. Interesting enough, um, in the s- in the state today, we got an update on that, that basically that was blocked in in court. So if we would've approved of those updates, we would've had to rescind them anyway, cause of legal entities duking it out right now, we'll just put it that way. So if you looked at the attachment, yes, if you looked at the attachment and there were some proposed Title Nine changes,
And the right decision.
we had based on legal advice, we're not gonna do that until we were recommended to, and right now statewide, they're recommending not doing that anyway, so we're doing the updates that didn't deal with Title Nine.
So if someone makes, wants to make a motion the way it is written there?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies, two hundred point oh four, two oh six point oh three, four oh one point oh six, four oh two point oh three, five oh one point oh three, five oh one point oh nine, five oh one point oh nine R one, five oh one point one four, five oh one point one five, five oh two point oh six, five oh five point oh two, six oh three point oh one, six oh three point one two, six oh seven point oh two, seven ten point oh one, eight oh one point oh three, eight oh three point oh two, and nine oh five point oh three.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that is passed. First reading of policies to be rescinded.
So as recommended, um, rescinding one of the policies and it's the only one out of the ones they listed that we had at the time. And that was because one of the updates, the the language from this policy will be incorporated into one of the updated policies we just approved.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to rescind policy five oh one point one oh.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is passed. Second reading for changes to policies, seven oh five oh one.
We approved the first reading of this one last month, this will be the second reading, and just as a reminder, this is the one um with the various um limits of what the superintendent's authority is and then in between, and then when we have to do the bid process and just updating that according to current costs and.
What what did we move it to again?
I don't know.
Good question, I wanted to double check here. My authority.
Sorry. Just cur- I'll let you have it on top of your head.
Fifty thousand.
Twenty-five, I couldn't remember the second number, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Thousand, yep, and then up to two hundred thousand to receive proposals, quotes and bids
Okay.
um to be presented to the board for approval, and then anything over that would go through the competitive bid process, anything over two hundred. Like as an example, we had to move forward, was that it? I don't remember if that was in the bills this month, but we had to have, um, last month, it was seventeen hundred to do the seventeen thousand, not hundred, excuse me, to do the lifts and the hoists and all the stuff for the basketball hoops in the gym.
Mm.
I would've waited a month, I don't think we would've got it done before school started, cause that's what it was.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we did it, I I did that last month, but technically
That's good. Yeah.
we're supposed to get a quote for them and then present and get approval, but time-wise, we didn't have time to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, is there someone who wants to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the second reading of policies, seven oh five point oh one as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 That is passed. Consider approval of change to uh September regular Board of Directors meeting.
So if we go, what we've done, the third, thir- thir- third Monday, excuse me, is the sixteenth, opposing the twenty-third. Um, with the holiday, it's just shortened time the number of days before then, and then just getting the bills done at that point can be a challenge, but also school calendar-wise, it appeared to us to be more open on the twenty-third than it was on the sixteenth. And I know there's never a perfect date, but there was less on the calendar on the twenty. And I know there's never a perfect date, but there was less on the calendar on the twenty third than there was on the sixteenth.
Any questions?
I don't know if there's any questions about that, but that's what we're looking at.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to change the next board, um board of directors meeting to September twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Okay, is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Say aye.
Okay, that is passed. Uh next meetings.
So in August, our meeting would be on the nineteenth, the regular scheduled August meeting. Um and I put in parentheses because I didn't know if it'd be approved or not. So the September meeting's on the twenty third and then the October meeting is on the twenty first. Those would be our next three regular board meetings and then just as a reminder, as we talked about earlier, the work session is on September eleven um with I A S B and I put two B D, but like I I must have put that on there before I talked with Luanne. It's at right now, five thirty.
Okay. All right, talking points.
Have a quick, easy meeting.
I know.
Well, sure.
I agree.
That is true.
I'm the quickest one on Burnham Hall door.
True. Some recognitions for our baseball and softball.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
A second?
A second.
Okay, we are adjourned. I think you gotta vote.
We have to vote.
Oh, is
I'm sorry.
all in favor?
That's aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I'm sorry.
I don't know if we've ever voted against that.
Um.
But let's stay longer.